Good evening, everyone. Welcome to what will be our last meeting for the month of May in 2025. I'd like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a prayer from Kyle Bailey, pastor of Community Bible Fellowship.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Father, we thank you for the day. Thank you for the beautiful weather that we've had today. Thank you for these councilmen and all these leaders here at Westfield who are leading us. And I pray that you would be with tonight, help our speech, and be honoring to you. Help us to have wisdom here. Thank you for the first responders. I pray that you would give them wisdom and safety. Pray that you would bless the city of Westfield, that we would continue to grow and honor you in everything that we do. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
President Tam, would you like to run the meeting, please?
Thank you, Mayor. May we note the presence of quorum this evening?
Victor McCarty.
Here.
Patrick Tam.
Here.
Kurt Waninger.
President.
John Dart.
Here.
Joe Deppner.
Here.
Noah Heron.
Here.
Chad Huff. We have a quorum.
We need our next order of business is approval of amendments for the May 12, 2025 meeting. I'm assuming everyone's had an opportunity to review those. Need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor McCarty, seconded by Councilor Waniger. Seen no other discussion. May we call the roll?
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next order of business is approval of claims. Assuming everyone's had an opportunity to review those, I need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve the claims?
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Dart, seconded by Councilor Waniger. Seen no other discussion. May we call the roll?
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Would just like to remind people to pay attention to the online version of the agenda this evening as well. Our next order of business is residents that wish to address the council.
Great.
Good evening. Is it on? Judy Shuck, Stanley Shuck, 209 West Main Street, Westfield, Indiana. And I'm here tonight because I'm watching a lot of construction. And anyway, I, being fifth generation Westfield, and seeing what's going on, I'm not against progress at all, and, but you gotta do it the right way. I've been, tried to be in meetings. I've talked to many people. Some of you have been to my home, which is on the National Register of Historic Places, and you're all welcome to come. It's got lots and lots of history, and that's what, I guess I want to keep that history of Westfield alive somewhat. I know that it's gotta be a part of who we are. I, I want you to think about closely all the new developments on that west end. One of the biggest things that I think about is traffic. NDOT is widening 32 because of traffic. We've got schools. We've got a hospital. And I've been on a Zoom meeting with the hospital because people can't get to their appointments on time. I've, you know, the school buses are going in and out. They changed their, their route to go down Wesley Drive to get there, and I mean, there's still cars lined up or in that roundabout of a morning and of an afternoon. Anyway, I just want you to think. I want you to consider. I want you to respect the citizens that are already here and what we deal with. You know, Westfield is a thoroughfare for central Indiana. And I know, hey, I've lost pets on that road. I've, you know, seen lots of changes. So I just want us to be very, very careful in what, what we're doing and what we're thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others that wish to address the council this evening? The next order of business will move on to a special recognition. Mayor?
I think I see Jim in the back there. Jim, why don't you come up and join me real quick? Oh, there he is. He moved on me. I'm old and blind. I was looking elsewhere. You've lived in Westfield very long. You've probably been to White House Donuts. And if you've been to White House Donuts, you know Jim and Paul Hicks. It took me a long time to figure out that Paul didn't actually own the donut shop. It was you, because Paul was always the smiling face that greeted everybody when they came in. When you think of small towns, you think of little coffee shops, donut shops. White House was just that for Westfield. I can tell you, my kids loved, still love, they're getting a little old now, but loved going to White House Donuts. Paul would always have a little basket of trinkets for them to pick something out of it. I think my kids used to write him thank you cards, again, not knowing that he didn't own it or was paying for those, those trinkets. But Paul passed away early this year in January. It was a real blow to the community. Again, everybody knew Paul, and he was just a wonderful human being. He would come, you'd come in the donut shop, and there's Paul behind the donut counter, just smiling and welcoming, and again, was really the face of, of old Westfield. And we, we didn't want this opportunity to go unnoticed. The first Friday of the month is National Donut Day, and we thought, what an appropriate way to honor your father as to make it the Paul Hicks Day here in Westfield. And we have a little plaque we gave, we wanted to give to you to put at White House Donuts so all the residents can come in and see that. Would you like to say a few words on your, about your dad?
Thank you. Thank you so much. This, this means so much to us, our family. It's, it's just quite an honor. It's gonna help my dad's memory shine a little brighter, and I'm all for that. So I'd like to thank the City Council and Victor McCarty, and I'd like to thank Mayor Scott Willis and his staff. Thank you so much. I'd like to thank the, the city of Westfield, though, because this community absolutely loved my dad, and he loved him right back. And it was just, he, he just, just had a smile, like Mayor Scott said, he would have a smile all the time. And he, he just, he just loved this community, and he, he, just Paul Hicks was the greatest man I've ever known. And now, his memory won't be contained within our hearts, but we can celebrate him now in National Donut Day. And it just means so much to me, and I know it's been a long time since I've just wanted to thank the city of Westfield for being a part of my life. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't share this story. This is a testament, not only to Paul, but especially Jim. First off, we have some great donut shops in Westfield. If you haven't been to White House, you really should go. As mayor, I'm not supposed to pick favorites, but as Scott Willis, the citizen, I love White House Donuts. I think they're the best donuts in Westfield, best donuts in Hamilton County. But a, a really neat story. The first time, this is going back 20 years ago, when I first moved into the community, I took my, my, because back then, White House Donuts was it. There was no other donut shop in Westfield, and I took, took my kids to White House for breakfast before the first day of school. Didn't know they didn't take credit cards. I don't carry cash. And I show up, and I have no money, and I had all these donuts picked out, and Jim said, you know what? I'm sure you're good for it. Take the donuts, you can bring me money later. And that's the kind of business owner that Jim and his father Paul, just what they built at White House Donuts in our community. Thank you from the bottom of our heart for staying in Westfield, for getting it out during State Road 32 construction. My apologies in advance for that, but thank you for being a part of our community.
Do you pay with interest?
I pay, and I tip really well.
Jeez, don't leave that part out.
I was shocked how cheap the donuts were, quite frankly. You gotta be kidding me.
He always took care of his regulars, though. I can tell you that. So moving on to new business this evening, we have Resolution 25129, which is expanding the established economic revitalization area, the North Point Business Park. This evening, we have Claire Gelenis here with us.
So close.
I know, I'm getting better. I'm getting better. At least I think I am.
Claire Gelenis, Economic Development Strategist with the city of Westfield. So I'm gonna take over if that's okay. Okay. So the resolution before you is a request to expand the North Point Business Park Economic Revitalization Area. This will include the recently annexed and rezoned parcel located at 2255 East 196th Street, as you can see in yellow. The existing ERA is highlighted in the green, and then the request for expansion for this parcel is yellow. I do want to note that we are only requesting to expand the area east of East Street, because when we worked through this process, it was one parcel with East Street splitting that west and the east side. And so this does align with that PUD proposal for the parcel also, for that legal description. So this is part, you know, why are we doing this? Really, this is a gradual next step in the process as we tee up the property for industrial traction and economic development projects. Kind of an overview of the project timeline with this parcel. So April 14th was the annexation ordinance consideration for adoption under the name East Street Annexation. May 12th was the 196 and East Street PUD consideration for adoption. Obviously, today is the ERA introduction, and then your June 9th meeting will be the public hearing for the ERA and then consideration for adoption. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
There are other reasons for doing this as well, though, for anybody that comes into this area.
Correct.
All right. So could you share that?
So the reason to do economic, an ERA, an economic revitalization area, you have to have this in place prior to any sort of tax abatement recommendations or introductions. And so with this parcel being rezoned for industrial uses, we want to really tee it up to have those conversations. And we are working with the client. We cannot share that for this meeting, but we will disclose that at the June 9th meeting.
So this includes both personal and real property abatements?
Correct.
Potential.
Potentially. Yeah, it does not guarantee that, so they do have to meet the requirements under state statute. You know, we, we consider everything, so job creation, wages, what is their investment for the project, everything is under consideration. But yes, under an ERA, you do consider both real and personal property opportunities.
And that's, that holds true for all of the land that's in green as well?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, discussion this evening? Seeing none, while this is a resolution, we're actually gonna consider this at the next council meeting then, correct?
Yep, this is just an introduction.
Correct.
Thank you.
The next order of business is ordinance 2534, which is the Jersey 32 PUD. This evening, we have an introduction by Lauren Gillingham Teague from her planning department.
Thank you. Let me adjust this. Members of the council, for the record, Lauren Gillingham Teague with the Community Development Department. Got them tonight is the 32, excuse me, Jersey 32 PUD ordinance. This district is generally located at the southeast corner of 32 and Poplar Street, north of Jersey, and bound east and west by Poplar and Bill Street, as shown. It includes 10 platted parcels, as well as some excess NDOT right-of-way coming from when they rebuilt 32 and created that roundabout. And this is all for proposed mixed-use development, including multifamily, office, restaurant, and retail spaces. Neighborhood meeting was held last week, and this item will be in front of the Plan Commission for Public Hearing at their June 2nd meeting. Brian Simmons with Skender Construction is here to give a short presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Brian Simons, excuse me, with Skender Construction. It's okay. First off, want to thank, thank the council, thank mayor for, for having me here tonight. Short presentation, I know you like to run an efficient meeting, so wanted to get through it. I know every development has its story. Wanted to give a little bit of background. So Skender Construction, I run our Indiana office, and we are a regional construction manager, and relocated here in 2020. Rented in a small city to the south of Westfield for a few years, and wanted to take it slow before settling my family and my work family. Ended up choosing Westfield, actually, the first time we drove through Westfield, we got off 31 onto 32, drove east, and my wife said, where's Westfield? And I said, we just passed through it. So, but after, you know, spending some time here, we found a great place to live, obviously the vibrancy, the future of the city, all, all the things that you guys have heard before. July of 2023, met with then-councilman Willis after a meeting with Noblesville and with Carmel about my work family, setting up my place to have our office, and councilman Willis said, well, are you serious about Westfield? I said, yes, we are. So then he sent me on a seven-month goose chase throughout downtown, saying, go check out that parcel. That parcel ended up into the green, which is where we are today. So from July of '23 through today, we have helped partner with the city to acquire the parcels, transfer to the city, coordinate with NDOT to get the NDOT land back to the city, and are on now version 14 of the design that we're gonna present to you tonight. So currently, that's kind of zooming out. This is the view off the roundabout, the view from Rivet, and the view from the new Grand Junction that's there. So with what we are proposing with the design, after a meeting with the mayor and his staff with Economic Development, various members of the community providing feedback, this is what we are currently contemplating. So anchored by a five-story garage, providing 574 spaces to the city. We are excited because every time we come downtown to dine, we, we know that there's a shortage of parking. I know that's been discussed over and over at council. You know, this is subject to final engineering plans, so this is just a current concept plan, 43,000 square feet of retail, the office space along 32, of which Skender will take the west half. This would be the new view from the roundabout, a slight upgrade over the existing, coming down the roundabout. Some of the feedback was really playing into downtown's natural river district, having a water feature, more natural look and feel there. The architecture has had many iterations, as discussed, you know, the feedback being we don't want it to stand out, we want it to blend in and kind of coordinate with the rest of the downtown. So we've had many meetings with various developers around downtown. The view looking back from 32, the view from Rivet, again, contemplating potential restaurant there, or maybe moving to the north. The view looking down from Grand Junction onto the roof deck, which would overlook the park. Some character exhibits. So very important for us is to recognize the history of the city, and there's been some discussion around integrating historic art within this art plaza coming off the roundabout. 32 Retail Plaza, again, coming down with the water feature, you know, some of the look and feel of what that may look like, a combination of dry retention and wet retention. This is our, what we call the Stringy Light Plaza, in between the two buildings, really seeing this as an active space coming out of the garage. You know, picture your large Jenga and just restaurant seating inside there that would be internal to the development. This is the fundraising deck, I mean, the Skender Roof Deck, which would be off of 32, just again, for multifamily and for office use. And then finally, the active roof deck, really just promoting that, you know, active looking off from the plaza back up to the development, as you look to the northwest from Grand Junction Plaza. So I wanted to keep it brief, but I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions, discussion this evening?
I got a few comments I want to make before there's any additional questions. And thanks, Brian, for the details on that. And we have, we've been working on this for a long time. He said 14 iterations. It probably was more than that, but 14 official iterations. We browbeat these guys to get the right project. I mean, this is going to be the structure you're gonna see as you come off US 31 into downtown Westfield. So we wanted to make sure we got this one right. Councilor Dart, myself, Councilor Tam took a tour of that project being built right now by Old Town. If you get a chance, you should step on a point to go look at. This isn't your mom and dad's garden-style apartments. This is some really unique concepts and provides a really unique living style for residents who will end up coming into this development. It will attract young people, it will attract some of our retirees as well, but it's, it's an amazing view when you look out from the pool into Grand Junction. It's, it's a million-dollar view. This is gonna offer a lot of the similar type of features. It's really going to be an exciting project for, for residents who want to live downtown. I'll also draw your attention to the original design. If you looked at that very first slide that showed where it was positioned in terms of US 31, this isn't typical Hamilton County development. You're not seeing a structure plop down right on the road, slammed into the, into the, to the street. Go back one. Right there, that's perfect. That's what you're gonna look at. That's what's bordering the road. So I think we're trying to be different in how we're doing these developments. We want more green space. We want more attractive development in our community, and I think this is, really does a great job of capturing that. Also recall from our last meeting, it's a three-pronged attack. I said that last time, let me take that back again. Three-pronged strategy in how we're dealing with parking. This is, this is pillar two of three pillars. Pillar one was Park and Poplar. We got that done. This is two. Three will be CRG with some of the parking they have. And when you look at the financing piece, which I know we've sent you guys some details on this, it's almost identical in the cost in terms of the parking garage. So you're gonna see two different, entirely different companies coming in with a very similar cost, and how we're gonna finance it is, it's just like the last one. The only difference is, we don't have a ready grant on this one like we did with Park and Poplar. So I know we'll dive deeper into the, into the financials as this thing gets its legs, but I just wanted to mention that upfront.
Well, I wouldn't, I would like to bring up the finances, Mayor. First of all, before we do that, though, in the presentation that you made on Park and Poplar, one of the slides you presented was 613 parking spots for Park and Poplar, 532 for Jersey. Is that, are those correct numbers now? I mean...
So that, that's part of the browbeating that he was referencing? We've increased our parking from 532 to 574.
Okay, so...
Is that just making the parking spots smaller?
So that is relaying out some of the parking on the upper decks and making them to consist in eight foot six, yes.
Eight foot, I think it's like six inches smaller or something. Yeah, I mean, I think, Janelle, I'm looking at you, you're nodding, because I think one of the last presentations that was made, either at the council meeting or somewhere else, we talked about driving more spaces. I think, what is Carmel, what is Carmel as far as the width of their spaces, and what were you proposing in Westfield that would provide more spaces but not take away, you know, comfortability for, for cars? Let's put it that way.
Sure. Happy, happy to answer. So the recent parking garages that I've worked on over the last, I would say, three to five years have used eight foot six as a standard parking width. And then that gives you opportunities down at ends of rows where you have to make spaces a little bit larger. Say you're next to, you're next to an IT room, or you're next to an elevator, you need to have some extra room for those doors to swing. That's where the larger cars will typically park. Also, cars that are larger will typically drive up further in the garage to find a larger parking space that's between two compact cars, giving them a little bit more room. And that does encourage people to drive a little bit further up the garage and utilize more of it. Eight foot six is very comfortable for most vehicles. You know, you talk about a Ford F250, they're gonna have troubles parking in about any parking space in a parking garage. But again, those types of vehicles are really gonna try to park somewhere where they don't have to park next to anybody, and they're likely gonna take up two spaces, no matter the size. But this did enable the, the parking count in the garages, in the garage to go from 532, I think you said, to 574. And then there are some additional surface parking spaces that are accounted for as well.
But this, this garage will be a bit different because Park and Poplar has no reserve, and Union Square has no reserve, but we're reserving 30%, which is 171 spots, likely for residents, right?
Up to, up to 30% could be reserved for residents or tenants at the option of the developer. And I will add that the, this garage would be owned by the developer and managed by the developer, as well as all the maintenance and repairs.
Which is, yeah, which is the same as Park and Poplar.
Correct.
So...
Correct.
There are a few less spots, obviously, I mean, 574 versus, versus 613. Not, not huge differences, but we're looking at the same cost approximately. I haven't seen those financials. But, but there is a form, if it, if it is the same cost, there is about a $4 million difference in cost to the city. Is that correct?
So the 613 spaces that you're referring to for Park and Poplar includes 90 surface spaces, and costs of surface spaces are much cheaper than for structured parking. So maybe in the range of 5,000 a space versus 35,000, 36,000 a space. So that's why they're able to do that, I would say fairly efficiently, compared to fitting, really honestly, these two garages are almost identical in size and have almost identical number of parking spaces within the structured parking itself. So we're just about as close as you can get, apples to apples, on the two parking structures.
But how are we gonna face the, and address the cost, the cost difference? I understand that there's not a ready grant, I get that.
Sure.
But it is $4 million.
Yep.
In additional cost to the city.
Sure.
And I'm not sure the ROI is any different or any better than what was presented a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, so a couple of things to consider. Park and Poplar, the assessed value on that project, I think, came out to just under 6 million. It was probably about $5.5 million per acre, because it's a much larger project that's spread out over a larger area of downtown. There's just a lot more unutilized space because of drainage requirements. There's a plaza that's much larger, the Midland Trace Trail cuts through the middle of it. This project is going to be our highest assessed value in the city when it's built, at $15.5 million per acre. So we are bringing a very high taxable, property tax income parcel to our city by building this project. So long-term, as this project rolls off, the TIF area expires. This project is going to be contributing more than its fair share to the overall economy of downtown because it is so dense. So I think long-term, if we're looking at the value of this project, this project, it's really providing that density, the walkability, and it's really preventing the number of streets that would be required in order to surround this additional, or this equivalent amount of housing, office space, and retail in another location within the city.
Will we be able to see the financials soon? I, I don't remember.
We can, we can put, I, we put together that spreadsheet last time. If you guys remember, when I presented, it broke down return on investment, how quickly we got that return on. We can do the same thing if you want.
Yeah, I saw that.
Absolutely.
I remember for Park and Poplar. I don't, I don't remember seeing it for this, so I appreciate that.
The financial numbers on this will be better because of what Janelle just said.
Can you give us, provide us like a breakdown of the parking for this project as well? I know we have it like kind of on a line item with like everything, but if we can get like more of a, a breakdown for just this project and the parking, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely. I can get that for you. Another item that I want to share from a financing standpoint is that Jersey 32 has, they have agreed to pay tax, a taxpayer agreement that has a 3% annual escalator on it. So they will be contributing more in tax dollars than what we would normally agree to on a city-backed bond. So if we had a city-backed bond that did... So if we had a city-backed bond that did not have a taxpayer agreement, we would not use any annual escalator at all. We would determine what the approximate assessed value would be of the project, the year that it comes fully online, and we would use that number for the entire duration of the twenty-five years. Instead, Skender and BW have agreed that they will pay an additional three percent each year in additional taxes to help pay for a larger bond, paying for a larger portion of this garage. So this is a significant improvement in their finances, supporting the project over time.
And then, is there a plan? I know there's two parcels that aren't a part of this. One is the historical house, and then others, the gas station. Who owned, is it, does NDOT own the gas station?
Yes, NDOT owns the gas station, is not part of the actual project.
Is, is there any future possibility of anything happening with the gas station down the road that, I mean, we somehow at least think about that?
We will have first dibs on purchasing that when NDOT releases the property. They have not released it yet.
Do you know what they're using it for, like what they're, is it for the State Road thirty-two project?
I think it's going to be a storage area for State Road thirty-two construction, if I'm not mistaken, but...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
I could be wrong. I'm pretty confident that we're going to show a lot of their equipment.
So in the next couple of years, it might become available for the city?
Um, probably. Well, I'm not sure on the exact date. I'd be hesitant to put it, go on record with it, but they'll, they'll want the length of State Road thirty-two project.
Yeah. I would just hate to design, I mean, this whole thing, and then a couple of years later, that property becomes available, and then we don't know what to do with it because we didn't plan for it, so.
Well, it'll be a future...
I know there's a house in the middle of it.
Yeah, there's a house in the middle.
It's tough to plan right now, but it's, obviously, we, we need to think about it.
We're looking at that parcel as a standalone project by itself. And, and you hit the nail on the head. There is a, a resident who's in this room, who lives in between point A and point B, and there is no, no intentions of trying to acquire that property. So we're assuming that that parcel will, we may or may not want to buy it as a single lot. It's probably not worth the money that they're going to want for it. I don't know, but, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Janelle, Brian, we, we had talked, and I believe the plan is that for the seventy percent of the parking garage, that Westfield residents will be able to park there for free for a period of time. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. And is, is that memorialized somewhere?
It will be in the final version of the, probably the parking declaration that'll be executed once we get through all the bond documents and everything. Yes, it'll be memorialized.
Okay.
And I guess going along those lines, the thirty percent, obviously, you said a while ago, that's important of where that thirty percent parks. I mean, we, you kind of assume that it's better for them, the residents, to park higher up and let more of the public parking be on the lower ends. Is that something that we're thinking about, I mean, memorializing at the same time?
It's definitely something that we should be talking about with the developer. We've not come to an actual agreement on that, but I do think when the city is putting this amount of money into a project and paying to upsize it, I mean, we're going to have a hundred and seventy excess parking spaces at their peak, at the district peak demand at eight PM. People who are visiting the businesses should be able to park on the first floor.
One other thing I'll throw out there, too, I just want to make sure everybody understands. We have done a great job of publicizing this, Brian, but we talked about before the meeting, it's rare you get a project like this post-COVID, where two-thirds of the office space that you're, you're developing or building is being spoken for with the corporate headquarters wanting to be there, which is super exciting. We're, we're excited to have Skender as a partner. They're moving their Indiana headquarters to our downtown area, and they'll be the first one to plant their flag there in terms of new development. And like I said, it's really hard to get office users in today's market, and to have that before any shovels go in the ground is a real win for the city of Westfield.
Janelle, could you talk a little bit about the, kind of the orchestra of traffic that'll be used, the garage will be used for? So night times, morning, dinnertime, evening, those types of things. It will create more traffic for the downtown, but just talk about that orchestra of moving traffic around. And I guess in conjunction with the other areas as well.
Sure. So I specifically look more at parking, and it would be Public Works that is concerning itself more with the, you know, the distribution of traffic through the downtown. But I would imagine that because we do have a lot of residents who will be living here and able to walk to restaurants, that a lot of the evening traffic that we would normally see happen in, you know, in a more residential area, will actually be taken up a lot by pedestrian traffic. We'll have people who just walk out their front door and go to their favorite neighborhood restaurant on Park Street or on Mill Street, and, you know, they're probably there one to two nights a week. We're going to have people that are walking down the street to get their morning cup of coffee. So I think that a lot of the traffic that you would normally see does get replaced. As far as people arriving and leaving, most of the people that will live in this type of development do not have school-aged children. So where we have a lot of bus traffic happening in the mornings and after school, I wouldn't anticipate that we would have a lot of residential traffic moving through this area at the same time because these people are not going to have children that are dropping off and picking up at school. If I lived near the schools, I would certainly pick a different time to be out there driving because I would not want to be sitting in the traffic. I think that you just kind of see in today's world where people have more fluidity in their workday, that things balance out over time, and people choose the times that they want to be out in their cars. As far as the, the parking demands, what we have calculated with our, with our consultant, LVR Consulting, is that we'll have a peak demand in the morning, which is really where the residents are still in their apartments, and you have people starting to show up in the office buildings. And then we'll have another peak in the evening, which is really the peak for the restaurants as people are starting to arrive home. We do have an excess capacity of about a hundred and seventy parking spaces during both of those times, so we should have more than enough ability to handle what this, what this development is producing.
Counselor McCarty?
Just two quick things. One, I found that it's two hundred and thirty-five units for the multifamily within the ordinance. Could you restate what the square footage is for the commercial retail office space? Was it forty-three thousand?
I'm going to let you say what the current number is.
I believe the ordinance said no more than two hundred and thirty-five units.
Yes.
So, yep, that, that will be upheld, and we are at fifteen thousand, five hundred of office. And I, I, forty-three, five is the number that jumps out, but I can confirm that and get back to you on the retail.
No, I just wanted to have somewhat proper numbers. And then otherwise, just looking forward to continuing the conversation through APC. So thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, one more question. When you and I met, first met, I think, about this project, I asked about for-sale units versus just rentals, and I know you're going to have some on the street. Are there going to be some on the street, street side, and then the rest of them up above?
So right now, we are programmed to have units on the street side on Jersey.
Okay. Is there any consideration for for-sale? I've been, I push that every month because there is no for-sale units in downtown Westfield. There aren't going to be any in Park and Poplar. I don't believe there'll be any at Grand Millennium. And I think it's an opportunity to establish some, some permanent residents downtown.
Correct. And that was, as we talked, one of the, I think that was version eight of our designs, was looking at the programming, and it did include for-sale. Unfortunately, it makes it more difficult financially for both the city and for the developer.
And it's coming. Hang in there. When we show you guys the, the final plan for phase two, three, and four, there are tons of for-sale products. There's areas where it makes more sense than others. So I know what you're seeing up front is not for-sale. They're coming, and you'll see quite a bit of it, actually. So let's hold that for a future conversation.
Brian, can you talk a little bit about the retail mix? I know I'm speaking with some of your partners, quite a bit of restaurant. I mean, there are all-day parts as well, breakfast, dinner, different price points. I don't know how much you can discuss on that.
I can share that we have interests from a number of micro retail, so smaller picture seafood markets. And really, our, our focus is on a lot of the, I'm going to go ahead and call them, take your, take your Mass Ave, your Broad Ripple, your Carmel Main Street type of clients and bringing them to Westfield and having that kind of energy. So the standalone two-story restaurant, which we are in discussions already with a high-end restaurant there as a standalone, which has some flexibility on the architectural design. And then we're looking at more transitional, so not your Park Street, not to compete with Park Street, but also not to be your thirty-two Portillo's and Chick-fil-A, and having maybe some of your more, maybe it's their second or third, you know, successful concept that gets rolled into Westfield is, is really our target right now.
Great, thank you. Any other questions this evening? This is an introduction. As Counselor McCarty said, you'll be at the APC next, and look forward to seeing you back here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business this evening is ordinance twenty-five thirty-five, which is Trailside Business Center. It's an introduction this evening. From our Community Planning Department this evening, we have Mr. Weston Rogers.
Yep. Thank you, President, members of the council. For the record, Weston Rogers with the Community Development Department. The item presented before you this evening is the proposed Trailside Business Center Planned Unit Development District. The subject real estate is just over twenty-six acres in size and is generally located at nine four seven West State Road thirty-two. This proposal would permit the development of a flex industrial business park on the property. The ordinance would require the site to be developed in substantial compliance with the concept site plan and in substantial compliance with the proposed architectural elevations. In addition, a trailhead amenity along the Midland Trace Trail would be required to be developed as part of this project. A public hearing is scheduled to be held at the June second Plan Commission Meeting, and then a workshop is tentatively scheduled for the July twenty-first Plan Commission Meeting. The petitioner is here this evening and plans to just provide a very brief introduction and presentation on the item. If there's any questions, both staff and the petitioner are available to answer them. Thank you.
And thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. For the record, my name is Matt Skelton with Church, Church Hill and Antrim with offices at one sixteen North Union here in town. With me this evening from my office, Lisa Claghorn and Chip Barnes with I-Three Investors, the developer. We're excited to share the revised plans for Trailside Business Center with you. We, as many of you may recall from, from some time ago when we may have met on this project, this, the land that, the underlying zoning of this property today is actually open industrial. It has been zoned that way for decades. The, this allows some pretty intensive uses. I won't go through them, but if you can use your imagination, it's like dry, dry cleaning plants and steel fabrication and things like that. The good news is we're not doing any of those uses, and we had our neighborhood meeting last week, not last Wednesday, and we had, we had five neighbors attend. They were happy to learn that we were not going to be doing more open industrial-type stuff. There's a couple of open industrial uses, two or three of them actually just kind of east of us, and they were excited to learn that we weren't doing intensive retail type of uses as well. So the way the site has been designed, the pretty parts of the building face out, and so deliveries are designed to occur internal to the site between the buildings. And to the extent that neighbors had any concerns or questions at all, I think they were pretty much addressed by the, by walking through the layout of the development with them. The architectural requirements, as you can see, are very high. Kevin is leafing through, but there's a couple of renderings in there that show. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. But anyway, so we are essentially committing, we've taken the guesswork out of this. I mean, we're essentially committing to what you see in front of you there. Also, the site is heavily landscaped. You, the, this is, this is the area that fronts on the Midland Trace Trail, actually, what is being shown here. But there is a significant amount of landscaping. The only departures from the city's normal standards, which are, are extensive, are really for this area here to open this up and, and make it a little bit more park-like, not only for employees and inhabitants of the, the businesses, but also to provide a park-like space for folks that utilize the Midland Trace Trail. And we, we walked through that with the neighbors, and they just wanted to make sure we weren't messing with the trail. They, they, they use the trail regularly, and they, they enjoy it, and they see this as an amenity. And then not the least of the investments here in the, in the trailhead or the trail connection area are, is a communal lawn space, a sixteen-by-twenty-four shade structure, several tables and benches and, and trash receptacles, bike racks, and a bicycle repair station in that area that's being highlighted. And there's also kind of a linear park, if you will, planned that extends north and south through the middle of the site. It's really designed to be a pedestrian-focused corridor. This came from a lot of work with your planning staff and your economic development staff, and we think the, the result is going to be great for the project and great, great for the neighborhood. So with that, we're happy to respond to any questions, if you have any, and we look forward to working with your, your team as we move through the process.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion with Mr. Skelton this evening?
Yeah, just for sake of transparency with those in the audience, that for about five years, this was my backyard, living in, on Rettford Drive there, so I'm fairly familiar with the property, as, as you and I have discussed as well. You know that this is going to become something in the future, and, and I do personally believe that the, just overall architecture is very much so an upgrade from, from what the first discussions were. I think those look great, the linear park in the middle there. But where I have just some hesitancies with is the entrance on thirty-two and the entrance there on, on Midland. One we can control, one we cannot. I know from prior discussions, just by NDOT and at some community meetings, that unfortunately, their priority currently over the next however so many years will be the east side of State Road thirty-two from our downtown to Noblesville. And being over here, living over here on the west side is not going to get much attention during that time span. So that's going to be a strain and difficulty for, for our community, but again, it's not something that, that we can control. But where we can control is the trailhead there on the Midland, which is, again, as I've mentioned in discussion with you, that I, I just do not feel this is a right place for having a trailhead, as the neighbors do see it as their amenity because Arbor was, were the ones required to put the stretch of Midland here, although, yes, it is for all of the community. So my only ask would be to, I know it kind of an opposite of other projects, is to tone down the trailhead here because it is used so heavily much by the neighbors. But otherwise, this is a better use than what's currently permitted today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is the thirty-two, is that right in, right out?
The, the location that would be a full access, to the extent we're allowed to have one, is the eastern access. The, the center access would be right in, right out.
Good. Because I don't really have a problem with the project. My, my only concern, which, which I discussed, is, you know, we're, we're adding, this project is definitely going to add semi-trucks to State Road thirty-two at some point. I don't know how we address that, but I think everyone that I've talked to is thinking about it, right? How do we address that? Because they'll be coming in from, from the west, which isn't really the problem, but if they come up thirty-one, now we're going through, down through Wheeler Road, and that's already a mess, as we all know. So that's my concern, something to think about how we're going to address that. I don't know how we do it, but that's my concern.
And my only comment to that is I, I think of the types of uses that one would expect here, I mean, retail, multifamily, heavy industrial, almost any of those are going to have heavier traffic than this.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not the number of traffic, it's, it's the semis that I'm worried about.
Got it.
That's really the, obviously, this is going to be developed, and any development's going to bring traffic, but the influx of semis to a congested area, you know, one semi is fifty cars to me, you know, so.
Noted.
Matt, can you talk a little bit about the building sizes?
Sure.
Square footage, and then if a business is interested in coming to this location, is it a, a build-to-suit? I mean, are there going to be certain square footages already laid out, or are you going to have a shell, for lack of a better term, and say, okay, you've got up to thirty thousand square feet in this, in this building, or you've got five, ten thousand square-foot offices or businesses?
I'll, I'll take a few of those, and I might have Chip answer a couple of those questions. But the, the buildings are approximately... But the buildings are approximately, the westernmost ones are a little over 72,000. Oh, they're probably closer to 73,000 per. And then the larger buildings on the east are probably a little over 90. And so in the aggregate, this development is likely to accommodate 20 to 30 businesses. There's, they're demisable walls inside. Do you build any of those walls?
Quick, I'll just address, apologize a little, laryngitis here. I'm Chip Barnes with I-3 Investors. The project here is really designed for a niche in the Westfield market. Right now, you guys have, got 169th Street, South Park, Tiller Road. There's a lot of businesses and a lot of space in there for groups that are 2,000 to call it 10,000 square feet. And then you've got North Point up the, up 31 that accommodates, you know, tenants really that are 50,000 square feet and up. So what's missing in Westfield right now is for these entrepreneurial companies, room for them to grow within the community. So we've designed this to kind of demise down to as small as 8,000 square feet. So you're going to see tenants in the range of 8,000 to 30,000 square feet in this project. And it just, as those companies grow, and it's designed for them to kind of go through this project. Our intention, if you've ever been to kind of that Saxon-y business park up in Noblesville, you know, the idea is a lot of like medical device companies, wholesalers, groups like that, that need a dressed-up image to, you know, a warehouse or a flex building here. So we're trying to dress it up for a higher-end user here that's going to have, you know, a lot of office use up front, and then have some warehouse space in back that they can source some product.
Does the, does the ordinance have a maximum per tenant, per square footage?
It does not today.
Something to consider, because, I mean, what if you build all four buildings and Amazon calls and says, we want all four of them, all of it? I'm not sure that's what we want. No, it's not what I want, you know? And maybe that's not the goal, but they come with a big check also, right? So maybe the ordinance needs to have a maximum on a square footage per tenant. Maybe that could be high, but just maybe to avoid one big conglomerate coming in and using it as a, you know, a big distribution center.
So, yeah, so to address that, actually, the version of the ordinance that is attached to your agenda this evening has been updated at the request of the administrative team with the city to eliminate a, like a true distribution center. It's really warehousing is permitted as an ancillary component of a, of a use. It can't be like the use.
Yeah, and if you guys look at the design, and Joe, I should have said something to you about this when we last talked about it over the phone. The infrastructure's not set up for 18-wheelers. There's just not. For a semi to get in there and try to navigate that will be very, very difficult. Now, I'm not going to say nobody's going to do it, because I'm seeing semis on Cary Road right now with State Road 32 shut down. But the reality of it is, the type of distribution that happens out is, they're not making big products that need, you know, palletizing and loading into a semi trailer. This is a different kind of product. Medical device, smaller product. Biotechnology, smaller product. I can't imagine a semi getting in there and navigating and being able to turn around and backing out of there. Again, not saying it's going to, it's not going to happen, but that's not what this is designed for. And I can't imagine a very heavy distribution or warehousing component would find this space attractive. It's just too difficult.
Don't disagree with you, Mayor, but there are delivery doors on the back of these units, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be distribution.
Yeah, but when a delivery is made, oftentimes it's made by a semi, because it's a less-than-truck load order, and they're shipping to multiple places around the city of Westfield or Indianapolis. So it's very likely that a semi will be in there, but not because the tenant is a producer of equipment going out, but stuff coming in.
Again, I'm not saying there's never going to be one in there, but this is not designed for heavy semi-trailer use. I don't know if you could even get two semis in one of those parking areas to try to navigate. Have you ever seen a semi try to maneuver and back out? I come from a manufacturing background, it's very difficult. Again, not going to say this is never going to happen, but this isn't really targeting that kind of user. There's always exceptions to every rule. We have no problems looking at the usage, coming back with some things to address that concern. But I want to dispel any thought that this is going to be a heavy semi development. It just isn't set up for that.
I mean, I agree with John. I mean, I think owning a company that would fit into one of these spots, we get two or three semis a day sometimes on deliveries coming, less-than-truck load, 53-footers, and they have trouble backing in and out. So obviously, you guys have engineers, so I just hope you guys engineer it correctly, because I do see you having multiple semis back there at the same time. So hopefully, that's something you guys are considering.
Yeah, I mean, it's designed to circulate trucks. We've put the dimensions between the buildings to be able to get trucks in it. Like the mayor well said, this is really not designed as a distribution facility. It's, you know, if you look at the depths of the property, the clear heights, it's really, it's going to have a little bit of warehousing. They're going to have some deliveries here and there, but it is not meant or designed to be palletized, racking in these facilities. This is a, you know, higher-end project that's going to be, honestly, from an economic standpoint, not make any sense for a distribution company to operate out of these buildings.
How, what's the max height on the, in the U D O, Matt?
I think it just defaults to your E I district, but I'll confirm. Yeah, we don't modify the E I.
What is it in the U D O, then?
Do you remember?
I think we also have to be careful on allowing like a 30-foot building here as well. I mean, I just, it's something to think about. I'm sure the neighbors to the south wouldn't want a 30-foot building, but I'm not sure if that's what the U D O defaults to.
We'll get back with you on this, you know, in heights, guys. It may take a while to get that.
And then are there any incentives or abatements attached with this?
Not yet. I mean, there would, there would be an abatement needed in order to, there's some infrastructure, significant infrastructure that has to be installed that'll open up this entire corridor. And that, that's the method by which we've discussed with the administrative team.
Matt, can you talk a little bit more about the lack of infrastructure? What's there and what's not there?
Well, there's, there's big, there's water and sewer both need to, if you actually look at an aerial photograph of this area, there's, it's no mistake that, I mean, it's like a big hole in the middle of development, and it's because there's no water and sewer infrastructure. And the guy sitting to the right of you probably knows more about where it's located than I do. But there are significant runs. And if you would like me to, do you know off the top of your head?
So if you look, the water, storm sewer, water and the sewer are located off a ditch to the northwest of the site. So there's about $2.5 million of cost to extend the utilities along 32. If you look at, like you said, this area is void of utilities at this point. A lot of these users along 32 are on septic, so we would need to extend the utility, the sewer down to the site coming from the northwest.
So who picks up the cost of that? Yeah?
Answer to the question about max building height, it's 60 feet in enclosed industrial district, which is the same as currently in the O I district, is also 60 feet. So it's really the same as what it is today.
So I think we need to limit that. I'm not sure what the correct number is, but 60 feet is not, I don't think that should be allowed.
We'll discuss that.
Any other questions or discussion this evening? You'll be heading to the APC next, and we look forward to seeing the progress there.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next and the last item on our agenda is ordinance 2536. This is for an introduction this evening, which is the city of Westfield, Indiana, amending ordinance 2452, setting salaries, wages, benefits, stipends, and other compensation for appointed officers and employees for the 2025 calendar year. For Deputy Mayor Danielle Carey-Tolan.
So for the record, I've been warned that I have one minute before.
Yes, you did.
So I will make this very quick. Before you, you do have a salary ordinance amendment. This is to establish the fire and police merit salary, and that's the only change that was made under this ordinance. And this is under a recommendation that you guys approved an ordinance back in August of last year, and then Department of Public Works in April made the recommendation of a $50 stipend per meeting for fire and police merit commission members. Any questions?
This is, just remind everyone, this is an introduction this evening. I know we have the chief here as well. Any questions this evening?
Just a request for, before our vote, is it includes a bunch of salaries for Grand Park.
That, that was already in there for this year, so we didn't make any other amendments, because we had those salaries.
So those will be removed in the ordinance for next year?
For 2026, yes. The only thing that we added is literally on page, and other options.
Is there a reason, is there a reason we can't just remove it now?
We can remove it now. We just did not make any.
I think, I think it makes sense. Counselor Deppner brought that up to me before the meeting. I think it makes a lot of sense just to clean it up. I don't want to do a wholesale review of all that, but we know Grand Park's not coming back, so let's go ahead and remove those out.
We just didn't make any other adjustments, because?
Yeah, I just, I just didn't, I understand, I just didn't want some perception of the public that we're still paying Grand Park people when we're not.
Yeah, we were at the very beginning of the year.
Right, right.
But we no longer are.
If we can just go ahead and mend that out since moving forward. And merit, we're simply doing something that happens really throughout the, excuse me, throughout the state and the county as well, obviously.
It's under Indiana Code 36-8-3.5, that merit commissions receive a stipend.
That's one minute.
Huh? I know.
That's one minute.
I know, we're over a minute. I've been watching, believe me, I've been being pinged.
Any, any other questions this evening? Seeing none. Victor, do you want to do a very quick APC update?
All we had on our agenda was a consent agenda for the God of Living on Chad Hill Drive. That's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mayor, any comments this evening?
No comments.
Can we have a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Thank you.